I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I would like to start out with the pledge. I'll call in Delegate Anderson, please, if he'll lead.
You will join me in place to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I'm Delegate Gary Howell. I chair the House Committee on Redistricting and co-chair of the Joint Committee. And I'm going to introduce some of the House members that are with us here this evening. To my left, we have David Kelly, and he is from Tyler County. Then we have Phil Anderson, who is from Wood County. Joe Staffler, who is from Montegalia County. And in the audience, I believe, we have Delegate Conley from here in Wood County. Delegate Kimes from Wood County. John Kelly from Wood County. Delegate Chris from Wood County. And we have Speaker Hanshaw, who is from Clay County, back there. We also have former Delegate Dan Greer and former Delegate Rick Atkinson. I'll turn it over to my co-chair for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Charles Trump, and I'm the Chair of the Senate Redistricting Committee. And it's my honor to introduce the Senators, members of the West Virginia Senate who are in attendance tonight. To my immediate right is Senator Eric Tar. Eric Tar was elected in the 4th Senatorial District, and he represents the counties of Hutton, Mason, Jackson, and Harrow Grove. And he's a member of the Senate Redistricting Committee. Also a member of the Senate Redistricting Committee is Senator Caputo, to Senator Tar's right. And Senator Caputo represents the 13th Senatorial District, the counties of Montegalia and Marion, Morgantown, Fairmont. In the audience with us tonight is Senator Charlie Clements. And Charlie is, Senator Clements, is elected in the 2nd Senatorial District. And he represents all the counties in the state that the three of us do own.[163.22][163.22](Laughter). No, not all, but it's a big district. It's, I'm going to try this right now. Marshall, part of Montegalia, Wetzel, part of Marion, Ritchie, Tyler, Dogbridge. Charlie, you get part of Gilmer? He's not part of Gilmer, and part of Calhoun, or all of Calhoun? All of Calhoun. So that's a lot of territory.
I have all the bad roads in the state.[194.81][194.81](Laughter).
Well, we're glad you were able to travel over them and join us tonight. So those are the members of the Senate who are in attendance.
Again, thank you all for being here this evening. And briefly go over the ground rules so everything can run smoothly. This is a public hearing on redistricting. The purpose of this and other such hearings that are being conducted around the state of West Virginia is for you to share with the members of the West Virginia House of Delegates and the West Virginia Senate your views and opinions on the redistricting. We are eager to hear your views tonight on House districts, congressional districts, and state senate districts. We will be applying House Rule 84, which is used to govern public hearings in the House of Delegates during legislative session. Pursuant to House Rule 84, members will not be permitted to respond to questions during the hearing. As you know, the Census Bureau had delayed the census data getting to us. We just got the final version of it today. And so we, none of us have had a chance to look at the final version yet. So, and because we got the final version of today, we will not be presenting any maps. The maps that you see here today are of the existing districts, congressional, state senate, and state house districts. But we did feel it was important to hold these public hearings early so that we could get your input as we begin the process of drawing the maps. We'd like to hear from you tonight. Each person will be given five minutes to speak. You'll come up here. There is a red light. When that red light comes on, your time has expired. Please finish your thoughts. And let's see. That's what we got, so we'll start with the sign-in sheet. And... Marie. Marie Krynok. You may proceed.
All right. I'm not here for redistricting. I am here because before we move on and forward with redistricting, I would like at some point to have to talk about voter integrity. We're one of the only states that doesn't allow access to our voter rolls without paying for it first so we can do our own voter canvassing as citizens of West Virginia. And we do have groups of people that are very interested in performing canvassing for this past election. That's all I have to say. I don't know why it's so difficult in West Virginia, but we do have groups of people that are curious to take a look into this, and we will do the work. That's the thing. Thank you.[378.99][378.99](Applause).
Next on the list, we have Rick Atkinson.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Really don't have too much to say outside of the fact that in House District 11, which I had served prior to this last term, we had three districts or three precincts there in Jackson County, which I think fit Rome County very well. And I'm just here to try to keep that district the same as it was in the past. And that's really all I have to say. It was quite a pleasure and an honor to serve that district. I enjoyed going to Southern Jackson County, and thanks again.
Thank you. Next, we have Thornton Cooper.
I have something for you all. My state senate redistricting plan. I've been looking for one of these stores.[476.62][476.62](Laughter). Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Thornton Cooper. This is the fifth U.S. Census that I have been offering redistricting plans in. I've been in court cases. In fact, 10 years ago, I was party to each case challenging the state senate redistricting, the congressional redistricting, and the House of Delegates district. Several weeks ago, I proposed a plan for redistricting the U.S. Congress, the two districts that we left in West Virginia. I'm working on the House of Delegates plan. That's an awful lot of work, but I've got the state senate redistricting plan ready for this evening's meeting. So under my plan, under the U.S. Census, the average population per state senate district is 105,513. I have a very close numerical plan. Under plan, it's mapped there, the populations per district range from 104, 963 for senate district 5, that's when it includes Huntington, to 105,822 for senate district 14. That's the one that is all of Montegalia County. You see, that's a very narrow range of less than 1%. So my goal on these things is to, in House of Delegates and state senate, is to make sure we have no more than 1% variance, if possible, for the House of Delegates redistricting and for the state senate. So during the remaining minutes that I have, I will go over parts of the plan. Senate District 1 would have a total population of 105,729. It would consist of all of Hancock, Brook, and Ohio Counties and part of Marshall. There's a little piece of Willing that's in Marshall County on the plan. It also includes all of Benwood and McMakin. Senate District 2 would have 105,709. It would be all of Wetzel, Marion, Tyler, and Dogbridge Counties, and the remainder of Marshall, including the municipalities of Glendale, Mansville, and Cameron. Senate District, now we'll switch over to the other side of the state. All of Montegalia County, population 105,822. That will become a state senatorial district under my plan, under the requirements of the West Virginia Constitution. I'm numbering the seven districts with number 1 being in the northern panhandle and number 17 being Jefferson County. That's the way it's supposed to have been done. And that's, they numbered it that way for over a century until 1964, but we added 17th district. Instead of renumbering the districts so we'd have the 8th and 9th in Canawalt, they just put the 17th in Canawalt. So I'm correcting a mistake that was made in 1964, numbering the, the same way the House of Delegates numbers it. Always number 1 is up in Hancock County, and 67th Delegate District is in Jefferson County. So I'm using the same format. So Senate District 17 would have 105,694, consisting of all of Jefferson County and part of Berkeley County, including Inwood and Falling Waters. Senate District number 16 would be immediately to its west, 105,696, all of Warding County. The remainder of Berkeley County includes cities of Martinsburg and Hedgesville, part of Hampshire County, including Greenspring, Springfield, and Cape and Bridge. Then to the west of that is Senate District 15, population 105,692, which would consist of all of Preston, Tucker, Grant, Mineral, and Hardy Counties. The remainder of Hampshire County, including Romney, and part of Pembleton County, including Franklin and Brandywine. All right? Let's sit down and get to the next page. So the next district would be Senate District 13. That would be all of Harrison, Taylor, and Barber Counties. 105,696 would be the population. It would also include the northern part of Lewis County, including Jane Lou. Senate District 12 would be 105,692, all of Calhoun, Gilmer, Braxton, Webster, Upsher, Randolph, and Pocahontas Counties. That is one big district. It's rural, okay? The remainder of Pembleton County, which is the western part, and the remainder of Lewis County, including the city of Weston. Senate District, now switching back to the western part of the state. Right here where we are would be Senate District 3, 105,587, which is all of Wood, Pleasant, Ritchie, and Wood Counties under my plan. No split counties under, in that senate district. So I could go on for another few minutes, but I will sit down since the light's on. Thank you very much.
Thornton, did you submit this in electronic form, too?
Yes, sir. I published it, well, I haven't sent it to you all yet, but I published it on Days of Redistricting. There you can, you go to daysofredistricting.org, and you get a password. You look up "published maps." You can see where every census block in the whole state is under my map by using the Zoom thing. But I will also electronically submit this to you.
Okay, thank you. For all those who are here, any maps or ideas that you wish to submit to us electronically, you can do that. There's a brochure that was available when you come in, if you have one there. And yeah, there we go. That has the information on it, and that all becomes part of the public record for us to look at as we go through the process. Next, we... Next, we have Sean Keefe.
Hi. As an accountant educated at WU and trained at IBM, United National Bank, Cooper's &amp; Lybrand, and Chevron, as a business analyst, statistics and data drive discovery of issues within systems and processes. In this last election, we have a president now who lost 18 of 19 in Bellwether County, lost three of three in Bellwether State. He won 10, I'm sorry, 17% less counties than Barack Obama in 2008, when he set a record with 69 million votes. This past election, that record was broken with 80 million votes in 10% less counties. 16% less counties. The evidence of shenanigans is obvious to any serious person who has dealt with data. And yet, none of our elected officials wish to discover that, to follow that evidence. And until then, what does redistricting matter? If we no longer pick our elected leaders, you guys can redistrict whichever way you want. But we need a society built on Western philosophy, the scientific method, and Socratic method of analysis and argument. And somehow, we threw it all away this year for a narrative. So until we fix that, you can redistrict all you want, but we no longer live in the republic that you just pledged to. That's gone.
Next, Metro REIT right here, looks like Charles Robert. If I've got that wrong, I called Doug.
I understand the population has decreased in state West Virginia, and so we have to do this redistricting. The way it was explained to me by one of the representatives, which I thank, or Chris kind of explained it to me, is you still have 100 delegates, so, a House of Delegates, that is. So no matter what, it still has to go to 100. And instead of having three representing one district, it's going to be one. It's going to be, I understand, divided up. I hope that's done fairly, and I hope that the districts are, I mean, I saw the other gentleman that came up here had a plan. I don't have nearly the plan, so I didn't send you guys anything electronically. But I'm also concerned about voter integrity, and I feel like the same thing this other gentleman said, Sean. You know, we can redistrict all we want until we get a voter roll, until we get the opportunity, like other states, to do our own canvassing. It is we the people, and you guys work for us, and we have the right to do some of those double checks ourselves. You know, I talked to officials this morning, and, you know, they gave me insight of what they believe. And I believe they believe that the machines work. And I'm not saying that they don't in this state, but give us the opportunity to go out and do this without having to pay a penny per person for each election. We might want to go back and look at this and do it freely like you could do in Ohio. I'm not sure other states provide us this ability. But again, we can redistrict all we want. We don't, there's a lot of us that have lost faith in our political system. We want to gain that back, and we know that you guys represent us, and you do the best you can. But listen to what we have to say as well. And I also am concerned about the medical mandates that are coming down for vaccines and mask mandates, and, you know, Biden has come out and said some things about 100 employees or more. What is our state going to do to, are we going to join the lawsuit of the 24 other states against this? The state attorney general hasn't come out and said that publicly yet. I sure hope so. One gentleman told me that he thinks that's what's going to happen. Can you guys make sure that happens? And, you know, thank you for your time. I don't have really anything more to say.
Next, with Howard Gurrell.
All right. He wants to make sure the camera's on him, because he's going to stay over there, and I'm going to speak from over here for him. Time out. You said that today you got the final census?
Yep.
With the precinct? I'm confused.
We received the final today.
About the counties?
Down to the census block level.
I'm still confused. West Virginia, Congress, depends on the counties, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, now he's ready. Now I'm ready. My name is Howard Gurrell. I'm native from Point Pleasant. I'm a sixth-generation West Virginian. My mother is from Mason County. My father is from Tyler County. The former state lottery director, John Musgrave, is my mother's first cousin. I came here to propose my congressional district plan to your committee. I want that one to be thrown out. Now. Most national media makes readers feel really nervous about redistricting deadlines. You don't need that. West Virginia is one of 30 states that don't have any deadlines on congressional districts. So you just need to relax. But West Virginia does have two federal requirements. And that's to draw its congressional districts to be approximately equal in population, Westbury versus Sanders, 376, US 1 in 1964, to comply with the Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. So I want you to think about the National Association of the Advancement of Colored People, because they provided a map to meet the second requirement, and I accept that. I'm also interested to note that West Virginia Constitution states that the congressional districts must be contiguous and compact. So this plan, oh, I don't have it, but the plan that was proposed by Thornton Cooper, it doesn't seem to really go along with that, the way it's set up. So I'm tossing it out. All right, are you ready to listen to my proposal? Because I can't hear it myself. Look at it. Some federal courts have the requirement for their drawings. Political party registration. Election results. It's all in your lock and key. You can't see anything. And they toss those keys into the Kanawalt River. So I'm a little bit disappointed that West Virginia is one of 23 states that does not have criteria for preserving communities of interest. Therefore, my proposal relies on communities of interest. So that's based on our most communities of interest are my proposals. The counties on the Ohio River bank from Hancock down to Wayne. The gas and oil-producing counties, there are 16 counties from Montegalia down to Lincoln. The remaining coal reserves for West Virginia counties, that's from McDowell down to Randolph, 14 counties. And the counties in the national park and forest, that's 16 counties from Morgan down to Greenbrier. The third map? It's good, from Leonard Kelly, but it doesn't really meet with my communities of interest. So we're going to pass the map. So here's my homemade computer. Here's my homemade computer bucket and computer. I'm going to put in here my magnifying glass. And the census numbers by county data, and a calculator. And throw it in this bucket. Tomorrow, mathematicians might protest my method. They could complain, you know, my method, it's too bad. The variance of my proposals are like this. 2020, 3,678. 2010, 4,871. Those percents are 2020, 4,871, to 2010, 0.0, oh, sorry. 2020 was .40, 2010 was .79. So are you ready to see my congressional district map plan? And he's got copies for you guys.
That was the last speaker that we had signed up. Was there anyone that came in late that may wish to speak or heard? Please come on. Please state your name so we have it.
I'm Ramble Riggs, County Commissioner of Ritchie County. On this last census, I believe Ritchie County's lost about 19% since 10 years ago. If you look at our school system, a couple weeks ago, we was named, Ritchie County had the number-one great school in the state of West Virginia. Our raw schools, Ritchie County's number eight in the state. So we're going to, we're growing. We're going to try to get people back into the county. To do that, we need to keep the own-gas counties together, I think, as a whole. We need the same legislators. We need Congressman McKinley, Senator Clements, Senator Maroni, Delegate Barnhart. We need all of them to stick together with all the own-gas counties, because I think if they stick together with us as a whole, we can make the counties grow. What fits for Tyler, Wetzel, Calhoun, fits for Ritchie. What fits for Wood, probably won't fit for Ritchie. A lot more rural areas. And whenever I call Senator Clements or Barnhart, Maroni, whenever I call any of them about meetings, it could be the forest end of Ritchie County you've ever seen, and you don't think you can get there from here. They never turn red in. And that's all we want to keep. You know, they know who we are, we know who they are. I think that just about, you know, sums it up. But I'd just like to, and go to Congressman McKinley. He's had two or three roundtable meetings on Ritchie County. He knows Ritchie County. He knows where, he knows the people in Ritchie County. He knows the hollers of Ritchie County. Same way as Senator Clements. You know, when I tell him, hey, we got a meeting in Auburn, I don't know if you all know where Auburn's at, but it's as far east as you can get in Ritchie County. And I mean, if you blink your eyes, you missed it. And I can call Charlie and say, Charlie, there's a town meeting in Auburn. He's like, never, ever turned red in. So I really would like for you all to consider leaving Ritchie County in with the counties that fits the same criteria. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Is there anyone else? If not, thank you all for coming out tonight. If you think of anything later, make sure you pick up one of those brochures and send any comments or ideas that you have to us. Thank you.